All right, good evening, everybody. City of Clear Lake Shores, City Council Meeting, regular meeting, May 3rd, 2023, at 6:30. We have a quorum, all council members are present. Item two, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Texas flag. All right, this is the neat part of my job and council's job, is we get to do a proclamation. Those are fun stuff, so bear with my reading. Everybody jump. All right, so 54th Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week, April 30th to May 6th, 2023, proclamation. Whereas the Office of Professional Municipal Court, a time honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the Office of Professional Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the Office of Professional Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, whereas the Professional Municipal Clerk serves as the information center on the functions of local government and community, whereas professional municipal clerk continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meeting of their state, provincial, and county, and international professional organizations, whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerks. Now therefore, I, Kurt Otten, Mayor of Clear Lake Shores, along with City Council of Clear Lake Shores, do recognize this week as April 30th through May 6th, 2023, as Professional Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation to our professional municipal clerks consisting of Christie Strop, Angie Galvan, Tiffany Wilson, and Selena Lanes, and all the other professional municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent in our local areas, dated this 3rd day of May, 2023. Test, test. All right, now I need my reading glasses again. Christie, it's all you know. Not to take from away the others, this is for tomorrow. This is proclamation for City Secretary Christie Strop. Whereas we are recognizing Christie Strop, and to honor her for her seventeen-plus years at the City Secretary for the City of Clear Lake Shores, Texas. Whereas Christie Strop is recognized for her professional dedication to the City of Clear Lake Shores. Now, I wrote a lot of this, though, it's not all fancy like yours. Whereas Christie Strop was instrumental in helping transition mayors throughout the years, many of them. Whereas Christie Strop dedication to the City of Clear Lake Shores and the Office of the Mayor has shown unwavering support and dedication. Whereas the City of Clear Lake Shores is a better place to do, due to the tireless work and commitment Christie Strop shows to her professional fellow employees, council members, volunteers, and residents. Whereas I, Mayor Kurt Otten, want to show appreciation for everything Christie Strop did over the last four years of Mayor of the City of Clear Lake Shores. Now, therefore, I, Kurt Otten, Mayor of City of Clear Lake Shores, Texas, do hereby proclaim May 4th, as 2023, as Christie Strop Day. Now, you said you didn't do the attest on the other ones, but this one I left it for you to attest, so you gotta do your own attest.
Thank you very much. It has been a long and successful, it has, it's been twenty-one years as of June 12th. So, we give you four more years.
Thank God.
Thank you.
All right, congratulations to everybody. Y'all do a bunch of hard work for the city, we appreciate it. Item number four, reports from council, Councilman Steve Wordes.
Nothing to report, but I would like to urge citizens to exercise caution on Dora Avenue at FM 518. I had the opportunity to go down the road, in one of my cars, not the golf cart, thank goodness, but in the car, and we were going to Petco to get some supplies, and like to never got across coming back home. So I just ask people to either try to cross at the traffic signal over there by Aldi, or if you do, exercise extreme caution, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Wordes. Councilman Rick Fisher.
Nothing to report.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Councilman Monica Leday.
I don't have anything to report, but I will echo what Steve said, it is a crazy intersection.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Leday. Councilman Alex Scanlon.
No report.
Thank you, Mr. Scanlon. Councilman Randy Cronister.
No report.
Thank you. The only thing is, ditto what Mr. Wordes was saying, it'd be good if Mr. Brad, if you could request Galveston County to take another look at the traffic numbers, I think now that COVID's over, it may hit that quota metric in order to make that go to a full-fledged traffic signal. But I just, we just crossed it tonight, and then you gotta go, and a lot of people that are coming from 518 on the turn lane, they seem to wait, so it causes a lot of confusion. I appreciate that. Item number five, staff reports, Police Department Chief Donaldson.
Mayor, council, the officers conducted one hundred and twenty-four traffic stops, two DWIs, three narcotic offenses, two accidents, one fraud, fourteen arrests total, disturbances, six, theft, four, resisting arrest, one, undesirable, four, assist other agencies, six, and we recovered a stolen boat, one. Residential checks, seventy-five, and business checks, four ninety-two.
Thank you, Chief, and City Administrator Brad Gouding.
Mayor, council, citizens, good evening. I'm really kind of proud to make this first announcement. Hopefully you've seen it by now, effective the first of this month, the newsletter that's on the screen will start going out to the citizens, hoping to make this a more informed community. This format, we'll go out to council twice a month, before the council meetings, there's the CA report, and then the first of the month, I'll go a little bit expanded with some safety messages, and really kind of let the community know what's currently going on throughout the city. Couple of things to highlight from the last meeting. The pool access hardware has now been installed, they will be having ice cream social with Civic Club tomorrow, kind of promote those memberships, and kind of looking forward and moving forward with that. This last week, hopefully you saw, Economic Development Corporation lit up by Johnny Bolton House, has taken the first step to move us towards a Texas music-friendly community. I think this can be very exciting and very good for the program. The workshop we had last week was very informative, and kind of excited about that. The building demo that was supposed to take one day is now turning into about eight. They have found that concrete that was under the building was a bit thicker than what they had expected, so they're still moving forward on it, but we're gonna get there, so I have stopped committing to completion dates on that. We're currently looking at engineering services, we've got some referrals on some very good firms. I think at this point, I'm gonna work up RFQs to send out and have more formal evaluations, select a civil engineer, so we can move forward with some of these bigger projects. Shell bottom boat ramp, I think last time I mentioned that the lease had gone to GLO, the lease did come back to the city. It did have a clause in there that was recommended against by the city attorney, so that has gone back now to GLO for revision. Once that gets back, we can start looking at applying, excuse me, we've got one more step from the Fish and Wildlife Service, has got to do an evaluation if we have to do an environmental assessment on that project first, before we can actually go to scoping the construction. The FEMA Cav, I had now gotten back the interlocal agreement for privacy on that, it's been signed in return to them, so we should get that data back and start working with our consultant and move forward and finalize in that. Mayor, I believe that's all I've got for the City Administrator's report. We've got another item further down the agenda, though.
Brad, on the FEMA Cav, do you have any details on the report, or are we just waiting for the report to come from them?
We're waiting for the report to come from them, what's, because there's privacy information on there, there was a form that had to be signed for FEMA to release that, and that's what's gone back to them, so now that data should come back to us.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, item number six, public comments. At this time, any person with city-related business may speak to the City Council if the topic of discussion is related to an item on the agenda. The comments may be made now or at the time the agenda item is discussed. If the topic of discussion is not related to an item on the agenda, the City Council cannot deliberate or take any action at this time. Comments from the public should be limited to a maximum of three minutes per an individual. I do believe we have, at this time, Mr. Paul Robinson with TOPPS, that will be asking for the lake to be smooth.
Smooth. Smooth water and smoother roads, that would be a plus as well. Paul Robinson from Dickinson, I produce the Texas Outlaw Challenge event every year. Don't ever call something the first annual, this is our sixteenth year, and I really want to, again, come to you once a year, and thank you for your support. I make this visit to seven city councils around the lake with the seven jurisdictions for the support of the event. What I ask is to review a resolution for a no-wake period on Friday morning, the 23rd this year, from eight till noon. That's when we conduct some of our activities out in Clear Lake on that Friday morning. Every year, it's the safest part of our event, due to all the support we get from the cities. Boaters come out and watch the events quite safely in their sectioned area. Coast Guard permits, of course, are approved already for this year. They're calling me, instead of me calling them now, after sixteen years, which is really nice, to be invited back to execute this event. We have ten charities, if none of you know that, that we support, all local throughout the area, and very much want to just say thank you again, and hopefully we'll see you again next year, on smoother roads. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul, and that'll be June 23rd, so we'll get that resolution on for council to approve that. Thank you. All right, consent and agenda, and item number seven, any items need to be pulled by council? Oh, sorry, does anybody else want to talk? Yes, sorry.
Howdy, all, appreciate you all being here. I'm gonna introduce myself, my name is Chris Burrell, I'm a new resident here. I purchased Glenn and Wanda Dowell's home on 123 Narcissus, close friends of mine, glad to be here, Mary Ellen, my better half is here with me this evening. As a new resident, I'm concerned, because I occupied April 10th, I've had two incidents already. And I talked to Captain Donaldson about the first one, a young lady nearly ran over my granddaughter and Maddie, across the street, too high of a speed. And when I tried to flag her down, I got the bird, and had to tell the girls to get, get, lay down, you know, get off the road, get off the road, get off the road. My heart stopped, because I was almost witness two little girls get run over by a transient citizen. I had to file a police report with Sergeant Flores this past Sunday, because Mary Ellen and I had pulled over on my Harley Davidson at the park to talk to all the neighbors and say hi and watch the sunset, and a transient driver, who shall remain nameless, but has been found, was drunken, drove over my motorcycle, and almost killed people. It's emotional, because I came from the North Shore, we had HPD there, we didn't have these problems, and I was told this was a safe environment, so I'm just curious what the plan is, or how we're going to address this. I haven't even been here a month, and I've had to file two reports, due to transient people coming around, it's, both of them have been on a Sunday. Beautiful weather, it's on the Sabbath, get home from church, we're having family time, we want to be on the water, we want to enjoy the parks, and I'm very concerned as a new resident here, that these things are going on, so. Maybe that can be future business, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention, maybe you weren't aware of it, that this is a problem. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, and please get with Mr. Brad, or Goudy, or Mr. Donaldson, the police chief, I'm sure they'll take your complaints and handle it appropriately. Anybody else for public comments? All right, item number seven, consent and agenda, any items need to be pulled by council? Having none, any rejections to accepting consent and agenda A and B? Having none, consent and agenda is accepted. Item eight, old business, discussion and action may be taken on the following items. Item A, increase Clear Lake Shores clubhouse rental rates. And I believe Mr. Goudy's gonna speak on this behalf.
Yes, sir. Two meetings ago, I was asked to kind of look and make a comparison of our facility rental rates, and compare it to our neighbors, and make some recommendations. Second page of the, Valerie couldn't go, there you go. The cities that I looked in, there was eleven municipalities, where our total is seventeen facilities, there are several cities that have got multiple facilities. With that selection, I really kind of wanted to focus on getting this to an apples-to-apples comparison, and getting everybody on the same plane. My first step was kind of getting it broke down to basically a per-person-per-hour rate. A facility that has an occupancy load of three hundred and charges three hundred dollars is different than the one that charges three hundred with a six hundred capacity. So that was my first day, first step to making this even comparison. Then I extended it out for an occupancy, multiplied that rate out, times a hundred and twenty-five, so it puts everybody at occupancy load of a hundred and twenty-five. The biggest separation between those facilities, that is really kind of, kind of hard to really quantify, is the fact that some of them are newer facilities, some of them got different ambiance, some of them come with a staff that does the setup, tear down, clean up for it, some of them have some kind of some AV rates, that was just two of those. Out of the cities that were evaluated, the deposits ranged anywhere from a hundred to eight hundred dollars, currently we're at two hundred and fifty dollars for resident, seven, three seventy-five for non-resident. Twelve of those seventeen facilities had a separation for a residential rate and a non-residential rate, including Clear Lake Shores. Three of the seventeen had different rates from weekdays versus weekends, three of the seventeen had an additional cleaning fee, two of the seventeen had an IT or technology fee, three of the seventeen had setup fees, CLS, or Clear Lake Shores' setup fee is just returning the gas on, getting the kitchen set up. The average per-person rate was anywhere from one to fourteen dollars, those on the higher end were the ones that came with staff, that were, took care of the setting up of facilities, tables, and accessories. Kind of the average rates went from a dollar sixty-seven to twenty-twenty-two, and again, all of this was calculated at an occupancy rate of a hundred and twenty-five dollars. The security for officers, they were all, pretty much everybody had requirements for officers, for anywhere the alcohol was, and then there was a breakdown by number of quantities. That rate was anywhere from forty to sixty dollars, currently we're at fifty dollars per hour. My recommendations going forward, and again, this is just my recommendations based off of those, and this is open to whatever council desires are. Currently, our resident rate for Clear Lake Shores is a hundred and twenty-five, recommending that go to two twenty-five. Non-resident rate is two fifty, recommend that go to three fifty. Officer security rate, fifty dollars an hour, currently recommending go sixty dollars. And deposit, currently at two fifty for resident, three seventy-five for no resident, recommending no change on that. Biggest reason for the recommended rates is based off of the cleaning crew that council approved for both the city facilities, this kind of offsets some of those costs. And that's kind of the reason, that kind of, kind of keep us still competitive at the same time, helping our revenues kind of on the maintenance of this facility. I'll take any questions as needed.
So with the cleaning fee, I'm sorry. I make a motion to accept these changes as written.
Motion by Ms. Leday, second by Mr. Cronister, discussion?
So you had mentioned the increase to help cover cleaning costs. Are they gonna come before, after, when are they gonna clean the clubhouse?
So currently, and Christie, correct me if I'm off here, but the schedule that was approved is once a week for the clubhouse, correct? That does not cover our options for any events that occur over the weekend. We are investigating possibilities for that, including just paying some staff, some overtime to cover that. Right now, we have not been able to identify a service that will come on an as-needed basis to provide those services. So the thing that's still up in the air is that weekend coverage.
So I rented it a couple of weeks ago, and the door was unlocked when I got here, the night before, I came the night before to put some stuff in the fridge, it was like nine o'clock, door was unlocked, there was a table outside, like laying down on the ground. I brought it in, and there were chairs everywhere, which was fine, I think they had had like a meeting or something, but the door was unlocked, just as a heads up. The back door was locked, but this side door was unlocked.
So, I don't know the exact, but I will, PD's real good about it, they know somebody's gonna come in, they'll have an officer come by and open up the facility, so you've got access to it and not have that delay. I don't know if that was the situation here, but we probably need to coordinate that better on the usages and look into that, and I appreciate you bringing that to our attention.
Yeah, I would just have to say, we've been lucky, that, you know, we've had some damage to the coffee maker before, and more things like that occurring, and it's getting closer and closer to us and on the island, so securing the facilities is a pretty, should be a high priority of ours.
Absolutely.
If we can execute that, that would be good.
Sure.
And the other concern was going from a Friday to a Saturday, or a Saturday to a Sunday, transition, and how do we handle verifying that the Saturday renters left the place in a pleasing condition, that the Sunday renters have no problem with having their event? And I know that goes back to having someone coming in overtime, but we need to do something where someone does a checklist and checks it off.
That's correct. We found, I agree that that's probably where some of our biggest problems is those that occur over the weekend, and we're still working out that, we do have some options, but nothing that I could confirm yet.
So when we collect these fees, where do they actually go? Do they go to a fund? We don't have any set up in the budget for this building in particular, do they just go into the general fund, is that correct?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Yeah, it sounds like something we need to do on the next budgets, to set up something specifically for, you know, this building and any money that come in, you know, use it directly for, you know, for this, for, you know, for cleaning, maintenance, anything else that needs to be done to it.
We're in some discussions with our CFO right now on that, and best way to handle that, but we agree that there needs to be some revenue stream that's identified to, for that specific purpose.
It does go to facility rentals, as in line item, just not specific to a location?
That's correct.
Okay, so you're sub-fourth level?
Yes, thank you for pointing that out.
So just, do you have any idea, how much revenue do we normally create, you know, on a average year for renting out this facility?
I can't speak that, I don't know if, Christie, you have?
Sixteen rentals a year, or something like that? So say twenty rentals?
A lot of the usages are non-revenue generating usages. But I'll sure make note of that, and we can bring that information back to you.
So you're looking at twenty-five hundred dollars just from paid resident fees, if you're looking at that?
I guess my question is that, you know, is, especially for residents, if we bump it up a hundred bucks for rental, how much is that actually going to, you know, give us, and will that really make a big difference in offsetting any of the costs that we've got?
It's not gonna make a huge difference, but kind of every little bit helps offset some of these costs, because as we have seen, and going to continue to see a rise in the maintenance costs for this, we've been fortunate, the Civic Club has done a lot for this facility, right down to the chairs that we're sitting in right now, so we've been fortunate that that is there, but I think we need to look at something to offset the burden some. But at the same time, if we raise it too much, we're gonna stop seeing those bookings, that's gonna reduce that, so it's no gains.
So there's no difference in rental cost, whether it's a weekday or weekend, correct?
Not for our city, no, sir.
Any further discussion? Having none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Having none, motion passes, five to zero. All right, item nine, new business, discussion and action may be taken on the following items. Item A is 2023-2024 Gulf Coast Aquatics Incorporated Pool Management Contract. Mr. Gouding?
Yes, sir, I'd like to bring your attention to the attached contract for pool services provided through Gulf Coast Aquatics. The, I'd just like to highlight the changes from last year's contract to this year's contract, and it really kind of boils down to salaries for the coast guard, coast guards, coast guard too, but for the lifeguard. The last year annual fees for lifeguards was twenty-eight thousand two fifty, that has now gone up to forty-one thousand four twenty-five. The maintenance costs remain the same from prior year. The special events, there was a thirty-five dollar per hour rate under the old contract, that's now gone up to a forty dollars per hour, there was a thirty-five dollar administrative fee that's gone up to forty dollars as well. And that is the only difference, is the hours of operations, the quantity of guards provided, is all remaining the same, it's just that salary rates which we obviously kind of expected.
Motion to approve the Gulf Coast Aquatics twenty-three, twenty-four year pool management contract.
Motion by Mr. Scanlon, second by Ms. Leday. Discussion?
Mayor, would it be possible, after your vote, that we have one more item that was missed on the City Administrator's report, after your?
Sure, yeah. I have a couple of questions, just, and I haven't looked at this for a while, and I think we may have signed it, because it was within continuation of out years. and I think we may have signed it because it was within continuation of out years for extensions. Need to ask Lauren if it's okay to be addressed to Clear Lake Shores Homeowners Association? It should be City of Clear Lake Shores?
Thank you for bringing that. That actually, the revised contract that I've got, I pointed it out to their attention. The new contract is to City of Clear Lake Shores, and that HOA section has been removed.
Okay, and then remind me, please, on the fees for renting the pool. Is that paid directly to the lifeguard service, or is that paid to the city? And then these fees are consummate to additional fees that the city brings in?
My understanding is paid direct.
Well, it sounds like that you can rent the pool through them, right?
I'm sorry?
You can rent the pool through them, right?
Are you talking about the specials, sir?
The pool party?
I don't have an answer for that. I'd have to do some research on that.
I didn't know you could do that.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that may be just a part of their.
Just a regular contract?
Contract, but we don't rent it out.
Well, let's make sure we check on that. I mean, at one time, I remember someone trying to rent it or whatever, and they set up their own party, and it gets really convoluted which ones have passes and don't have passes and stuff like that. So I'm not wanting to dig into all that, but just make sure it's for our rules.
Definitely, absolutely. Thank you.
And then they offer swim lessons, you're stating here?
They do not for the city. That's part of the general contract that they've got with others.
Are those things correct on the other copy you said you had of this?
The only thing that has changed is the line that says between Gulf Coast Aquatics and the City of Clear Lake Shores, where the other one said Clear Lake Shores Homeowners Association in care of. So it's just strictly with Clear Lake Shores. That's the only change that's different.
We'll need to change that on number seven as well. The Clear Lake Shores Community Association, we'll have to change that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's throughout the document. It would be better if they just said customer or something. Put it in one place. Because they have Clear Lake Shores Community, Clear Lake Shores Homeowners Association. There's several places they talk about an association versus a city.
The contract that I've got here is the one we've got, it doesn't have any reference to Homeowners Association. I'll be glad to send this out to council.
But it looks like when they made the revision, they've, they pulled all that out.
So on the revision you have, are they referring, because I've got it on here for Clear Lake Shores Homeowners Association, care of City of Clear Lake Shores herein, hereafter called the association. Are they just calling it the city now in that new one, or are they still calling it the association?
There is no reference to any association. If we kind of pass that around there.
I'd like to amend my motion. Can I do that?
Uh, yeah.
No, we gotta take a vote first on the first one. No?
No.
We'll take a minute, yes.
I'd like to amend my motion to table this and bring this back next time with the revised contract for us to approve next meeting.
No problem.
I second the amendment.
All right, any discussion? All in favor of tabling?
Aye.
All right. It'd be good to have Lauren just take a look at it. Maybe that'd be easy button. All right, tableled item A. All right, item B is text pool resolution amending authorized representatives. Mr. Gouding?
This is just kind of standard cleanup to add Cheryl Hunter, the CFO, and myself onto the, as authorized users on text pool, which is our investment pool.
Make a motion to approve item A under number nine, or item B, I'm sorry, text pool resolution amending authorized representatives?
A second.
Motion by Mr. Cronster, second by Ms. Leday. Any discussion? Having none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Having none, motion passes five zero. And back to you, Brad, on the catch-up item.
So, and I'm just putting out here for food for thought, and we decide which direction. This last two weeks, I've been working on getting updates to the parking lot bids that was originally submitted back in September, so we can kind of have some discussions on which way to move forward. Mayor, I don't know if you want to get into specific details, but those were included in your packets. They're ranging anywhere from five hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars for both parking lots up to seven seventy. And we do have price breakdowns in your packet per parking lot. These bids are based off of a concrete finish. We did have one, one bid that was for reclaimed materials, which is substantially lower. I'm not gonna reveal that number at this time, because should we decide to go that route, we will need to rebuild everybody, and I don't think it's fair for that vendor to have that number out. But it's probably half the cost of, your cost for concrete. The thing that's gotta be reevaluated is, it's stated reclaimed material, but I don't know if that's with an asphalt overlay, or, so I need to, before we look at that a little bit closer, we need to, I'm recommending that we have a joint EDC, city council workshop to kind of get this project moving forward. I think we all see the needs for it.
And on those bids that you, that came back in, was the original lowest bidder one of them?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, anything else?
No, sir, that's it. Thank you.
All right, we'll adjourn at nineteen oh seven?